Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's board meeting for Wednesday, September 21st. The Board was in executive session to discuss matters of health and safety and litigation subject to Board approval. We also had an audit committee meeting before this, and I would like a motion to reopen the public meeting. Anyone? Hillary, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. So, tonight is the 21st night of September. I will spare you all and refrain from breaking into a wonderful Earth, Wind &amp; Fire song, however tempting that might be. I want to thank everyone who came out last Saturday for Community Day. We had fabulous weather and great conversations with many community members who stopped by our CCSD booth. It has always been one of my favorite events of the year here in town. You really get a chance to meet new people, catch up with old friends, and just get a glimpse into all of the organizations and individuals that make our town a wonderful place to live. A lot of people stopped by to say hello to our administrators. Andrew Corsilia was a big draw. A lot of the high schoolers came by to show him some love. Community members asked some questions about the bond and some other school-related matters. A lot of students put suggestions in our suggestion box to try and win the lunch of their choice delivered by Dr. Ackerman. She's going to make a decision on that. And a number of people talked about the big news that was released on Friday, which was that Harris-Grilly High School was named a 2022 Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. This award is part of a program to recognize what the department considers to be exemplary high-performing schools. I just want to say that this is a big deal. Just to give you some statistics, only 297 schools in the entire country get this honor. And it is not just high schools, it is elementary and middle and charter schools and the like. There were only 20 schools in New York, four in Westchester, and Grilly was one of them. We are so proud of everyone that has worked so hard to earn this recognition, our incredible administrators, our faculty and staff, and our students and the families and community members that support all that we do here. So, there are a lot of thank yous to go around, and obviously, not everyone we need to thank is here tonight, but some of them are, and I just want to take a minute to give them a round of applause on behalf of the Board because it's an incredible accolade. So, thank you all very much for everything you did to earn that amazing honor. Something else we are also very proud of is the caliber of faculty that we are able to attract to our district. And just before tonight's meeting at 6:45 right out here at the high school, we had another annual event that I love, and I know the Board loves as well, which is our new teacher welcome reception. At a time when you read about staffing challenges in schools throughout the country, we are fortunate enough to be able to welcome a pool of new educators to our district. And tonight, the Board and the administrators got to meet our new teachers and learn a little bit about them. So, I just want to publicly welcome them all to Chappaqua, thank them for choosing us to join here, and I also want to thank Andrew Corsilia and the entire HR team for helping us find this wonderful group of new teachers who are all very excited to be here educating all of our students. And for tonight's meeting, we will again be going over the potential bond referendum so we can tell you what we think we need to do to keep all of the schools in this district as great as they are and also improve them in areas that we feel will be a benefit to everyone. We've been receiving comments about the bond, and we are in the process of not only determining next steps, but also creating a way to access easy answers to some of your frequently asked questions, so stay tuned for more information on that. I also want to mention the Button Hook property, which generated a lot of public comments during last week's board meeting. As stated last week, and as the Board has stated all along, we are trying to give the public as much information on this process as possible while still operating within the legal guidelines that govern our discussions concerning real estate transactions. The community may be aware that all Boards of Education in New York operate under New York State's Open Meetings law, which requires us to transact a business in public during a meeting just like this. What most people are likely not aware of is that New York State law also allows, and at times requires, Board members to discuss certain specific topics confidentially in what's called an executive session, which is closed to the public. One of these specific topics is, in fact, real estate transactions. The bottom line here is that there are things we cannot discuss in public, but we wish to be as straightforward with the community as the law allows us to be. So, in terms of an update, here is what we can tell you. We have more than one offer on this piece of property. We therefore need to do our due diligence to gather as much information as possible on all things financial and environmental so that we can make a good and responsible decision as to how to move forward. Last week, we mentioned that we were anticipating comments from the Department of Environmental Protection on the status of a proposed development on the Button Hook property. We received those comments, and there is a meeting scheduled for next week with the DEP to go over those comments. We therefore need to have this meeting, again, so that we can have all the relevant information related to this property. I know certain individuals and organizations may be impatient to hear from us, but we cannot follow anyone else's timeline but our own, and one that allows us to do our job properly and make what we feel is a good and proper decision regarding the disposition of this property. So, again, we are working on this, we will keep you informed, and we will continue to share new information with you as soon as we can. And lastly, the district will be closed next Monday and Tuesday in observance of Rosh Hashanah, so I want to wish all of those celebrating a happy and healthy New Year. And that is it for my report. I can hand this off to Dr. Ackerman for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jane. Just wait one second for our presentation to be brought up. Let me try again. I don't know, maybe I did that. Hold on, let me go this way. I think I'm going the wrong way. There we go. I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Education for hosting our new faculty meet and greet right before our meeting. It was a nice opportunity for our staff to interact with the Board of Education, to get to know some of your goals, and for you to hear from our staff some of the things that they're thinking about as new members of our school community. I want to thank Lisa Elsner and Andrew Corsilia for organizing that event for us, and we look forward to hopefully seeing some of our new staff present with our students as we get ready to support our building presentations moving forward this academic year. I also want to acknowledge, and I thank Jane for sharing this in her president's report, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge Andrew Corsilia and the high school team. The application process for the Blue Ribbon Honor was extensive and extremely time-consuming, so I appreciate all their efforts to respond to New York State's request that we submit an application on the state's behalf for this honor. And I want to thank Andrew for putting us in a position where we won the award from the federal government. And Andrew, and Jacqueline A. Bear, and Sandy Seppi, and I will be attending an event on the district's behalf in Washington where we'll receive the honor, bring the plaque back to the district. So, we're very happy to be able to do that on behalf of the district. There's very stringent requirements of who can attend that event and who cannot, so luckily, we're all on the list. So, okay, so I know particularly our elementary families were very disappointed that Back-to-School Night was held by Zoom, and so we've created opportunities for our families to go into our buildings, see our classrooms, and be able to meet families of other children within the classes so that they could build some connections and maybe have some play dates outside of the school setting. So, I just want to share with you those dates so you understand that we are moving forward, we are responding to those concerns. Elementary open houses have already happened. We've also had, some of our schools have already had these building tours where we've had great parent attendance, we're really excited about that. Our middle school open houses will have tours prior to that event next week, and then Grilly has two opportunities, not just for our high school families to come and see our buildings, but opportunities that will be presented for our entire community to come out and see what's been happening in the Grilly facility, especially since 2020 when we've had so much construction that's taken place, but not a lot of opportunity for people to come in and see our spaces. One of those dates is on Homecoming Friday, so we're hoping to have a lot of traffic within our space that day from people beyond the high school parent population. So, I want to thank our administrative team for responding to our parent concerns in a way that we think is appropriate and safe and helps us make sure we keep our teachers in our classrooms and reduce the spread of COVID in our spaces. I also want to mention that Andrew Lennon, Joe Gormondo, Jane and I had met with our partners, our crisis response partners, two weeks ago, and we have, we're going to have an opportunity where members of our police force, ambulance squad, fire, fire, house, homes, firehouse, firehouses, fire departments are going to be able to come to Grilly next week and are going to provide some building tours for their volunteers and for members of their staff, just so they can understand the layout of the building since we've had so many changes. So, we look forward to welcoming them and continuing our partnership with our crisis response teams. I don't know, Jane, if you wanted to add anything from that meeting?
Yeah, I think that was very good, and that's going to be a continuing process throughout the year where we have some table discussions on response protocol, mapping of the buildings for easy access, and it's really all part of our continued security and safety audit process and making sure that we are corresponding with all of the personnel that will help us in an emergency, and that everyone knows what their protocol is, where they will be, what they will do, and making sure that everyone is very familiar with their roles, and we're going to be rolling that out throughout the year and making sure that all the buildings are taken care of.
And then we plan to have a large-scale tabletop exercise at Grilly in spring. So, thank you, Jane, for sharing an update on the Zarder or Button Hook property. I just wanted to share with the community more specificity around the DEP response. So, we received your letter Thursday after the meeting, so that the unfortunate timing around that response should be noted. And then I just wanted to share, as a follow-up to Jane's comments, that we are scheduled to meet with the DEP next week on the 28th. So, hopefully, I'll have more information to share with you at our next Board of Education based on those conversations. And then I just wanted to highlight some upcoming events. Obviously, this Thursday, we have Grilly's open house. As Jane mentioned, we're closed for the holiday on Monday and Tuesday. And then next Thursday, we have the middle school open houses, and then we have our next board meeting is on a Monday because of Yom Kippur. So, just some adjustments in our calendar we want people to be aware of in support of our, the holidays that our families celebrate, and as well as our professional development scheduled to support our social justice work. All right, so now, we're going to move into our facilities planning presentation number four.
Can I ask you one quick question in case parents are curious? Can children go to the school tours with their parents?
Oh, yeah, especially for the elementary school. I think they piggyback them around socials, so it'd be easier for families to attend. So, of course, that would be great. We'd welcome that. Okay, so are any other questions? All right, so here we are, facilities presentation number four. So, I just want to go over, I think it's important to present the timeline on where we are today. So, we began talking about potentially having to support our facility improvements through a capital bond back in March during the budgeting process, and then over the summer, we have had multiple meetings with our architect, with our bond council, and with our administrative staff and the Board of Education to get to the place where we are today, where we're starting to potentially finalize some plans to move forward with a referendum vote to support capital improvements. So, our discussion outline tonight is to talk about community feedback that we received through the survey and the Community Day, revisit the propositions, the potential proposition scope and budget, as well as the, any adjustments the Board may or may not want to make to that structure based on feedback, and then revisit the timeline with specific focus on the referendum date, because if we're going to move forward with a vote at the end of November, then the Board would need to take action on the 3rd. So, the first thing I'd like to do is have a discussion regarding the feedback that we received over the past few days from the community regarding the bond vote, and so, or potential bond vote. So, the first thing I want to share is that the Communications Committee sent out on Board of Education a notice to everyone in the district, including our staff, regarding the potential referendums that we have been discussing at our previous meetings, and we had an open-ended survey attached to that. We've had, we had 13 people respond, 12 were parents, and one were staff members, and I think the comments in the responses probably will be reflective in the comments that the Board are going to share regarding the feedback that they've heard from the community. So, maybe it would be best if it makes sense to the Board if they can share some of the feedback that they've been receiving over the past few days, and Andrew or I can answer any questions, and we can talk through that before we move into the next portion of the presentation. So, would anyone like to begin?
If you want to start, like, we could start Warren and go down if you want, or...
Sure. I've heard some both positive and less than positive comments on the bond. The positive was that people feel that these things need to be done, and that they understand that, you know, as a great district, a Blue Ribbon-winning district, we need to keep our facilities up to date, and we've had some other, we've had some issues outside of our direct...
Warren, can you, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you get the mic closer?
I'm sorry. That, we've had some issues that were beyond our, you know, ability to correct, like COVID, and that cost us a lot of money to continue working on that, to keep our schools open, which I think we were one of the only districts that kept our schools open. That said, some of the concerns I've heard are that this is a big project, it's a big bond, and people are concerned about the economy, and, you know, Great Britain's has double-digit inflation, and people think we have to do the work, but they're concerned about the scope of the project because of the economy, and it's hurting, you go to the grocery store, it's hurting people when they're going to buy groceries, it's hurting people on fixed incomes, hurting, you know, the empty nesters in the community, it's hurting parents who have just moved here, they may have sold their house and moved to Chappaqua, and it's just a concern about the scope, so maybe we should take a look at that a little bit. But that's the only thing I've heard, so, thank you.
Thank you, Warren Keely.
So, I've gotten several comments and feedback about it, and for the most part, they're pretty positive, and people are optimistic, I think, but they did share that when they first think about the bond proposal, they're sticker shocked, they see the big number, and then they feel like they're stuck, but then when they read through all of the items that we have on the proposals, it makes sense, and that it is time. But I do think there is some concern around the timeline and questions about, is it the right time to do this just because of the interest rates being high due to the inflation? I've got questions about, you know, why are certain projects, why were certain projects taken out and certain projects left, you know, because different people have different priorities. But really, I think also the bottom line for a lot of people, what I've heard so far is that they want to know, what is this, how is this going to impact me? What is it going to look like when I have to pay my taxes? How much, and I know that we've, you know, had links that show graphs and charts, but I think, you know, sometimes it's a lot of reading material, and people just want to know, this is what I pay now, how much is it going to go up, and how is this, and for how long, right? So, it's information that we have out there, but I think sometimes people want to hear it from a real person, just personally, directly to them, face-to-face, so I think those were reasonable comments.
Thank you, Keely. Ryan?
Yeah. I think echoing some of the same things we've heard from others, plenty of positivity about, you know, wanting to stay out in front of problems before they become something more concerning that would have more expense for us. I would say on the critique side, it's less, I think, I've heard less of the, well, can we handle this now, and more, I think, seeking clarification about, well, why a bond, and what belongs in a bond, and what is, what do we vote for in the spring when we vote for the budget that we pass each spring? Why are some of these things not in that budget? Why do they need to be in a bond budget? So, I know that we've discussed that at some length, but I think for community members who aren't paying attention to all the details, because they have got busy lives and they're trusting us to be paying attention to these details, you know, coming up with a way to really summarize and clarify why this is needed in a really pithy, cogent way, like short way, that is understandable to people. Most people, when I explain it to them, they're fine, but they need that little two-minute description to help them get an understanding of, well, oh, well, what's the tax cap? What does that mean? And, well, how come we haven't done one of these in 20-something years? You know, so people, I think, have legitimate questions just because they're not fully up to speed on how this process works, and so I think if we can do a good job in rolling out clear, short materials that people can digest easily, that most of the concerns that I've heard would be alleviated by that.
Thank you, Ryan. Hillary?
I've gotten a decent amount of feedback on this in a variety of fields, so I'll just go through them sort of quickly. The first is, like everything else, there were people on both sides, even of specific issues, right? Like, I had community members say to me, I really wish this bond, even if it was for more money, would have air-conditioned the whole school buildings, and then I had parents come up, you know, under 10 minutes later, saying, why do these kids need air conditioning? This is a complete waste of money. So, I think, you know, my biggest takeaway is this, like so many other things, there really is not consensus on a lot of things in terms of what is a priority in the school building and what we need or don't need in the school building. But to that, I didn't have any feedback in terms of the things like the roofs, right? Like, the, let's call them absolute necessities, like everybody understands that you need to have functional roofs on your building in order for kids to learn. I did have people ask me, you know, why wasn't this part of the normal budgeting process? And I tried to explain it, and really, I think especially for community members who have been part of our community for very, a long time, the tax cap came in during their tenure as residents of our community, and I think did change things in terms of how the district has to budget. And so, I think that something like a bond for things like roofs feels different because pre-tax cap, it wasn't done the same way. Like, it was, it was just a different financial analysis, so I think that that, when explained, was clear and is worth explaining. The comment I did hear more than twice, let's say, is that whereas people understood the need for bond for necessities, it felt like there were a lot of, let's call them wants in here as opposed to needs, and that there were things where we live in a very privileged community, and were all of these things that we needed to ask the taxpayers to fund right now through a referendum that was there. Were there places in here where if we streamlined it to, look, we really need to do this, like, you know, I keep coming back to it, the roofs, because that's one that I didn't get any pushback on that from anybody. But I did candidly get pushback on the field in particular at Seven Bridges, where I had many parents, again, whose kids had gone through the district, say to me, you know, my kids went through the district, and we had much less good fields at that point, and our kids are all fine. And then the other thing where I got a number of specific questions, and I just want to ask the question, and I'm sure it'll be addressed again, is with the outdoor bathroom proposed at Grilly, and, you know, many, more than a few people said, that seems really unnecessary, but then those people also said, and as a follow-up, how do we ensure that if we do spend the money on this, it's going to be well-maintained, that we're not investing in something, should this bond pass, that's frankly going to be disgusting after a year or two because it's a public outdoor bathroom?
Yeah. I think what I'm hearing you say is some of the concerns that are noted based on the bathrooms that we currently have out there. So, this was a decision that was made before I was here or Andrew, but the decision to have those bathrooms non-water functioning added a layer on it that's different than all other facilities that we have here in the district. I think they were probably modeled off of some of the recreation facilities that we have out there, but I would think that some of the outcomes of modeling it that and that way was the volume of people that we have here on this site using that facility is very different than a Getney Park or somewhere else where that bathroom is. Also, with that particular facility, and again, decisions were made, and they are what they are, that facility is not maintained by the district. We hire an outside company because the tank needs to be pumped, and it needs to be cleaned by that company. So, there's a layer on top of that particular structure that's very different than would be within our own facilities here on campus, which we would maintain. And if we were to move forward and the community were to support through a referendum, a working water-based bathroom down at the concession space, we've already talked about how to restructure our staff so that we would have someone here during the weekend time to maintain the facility while we were open, because you can't just leave that facility open and not have our crews going in there and cleaning it, it's just, it can't happen. So, during the week, it's not a problem. On Saturday, during the morning and afternoon, it's not a problem, but we have to be thinking about now, when our rec teams are here on Saturday afternoon and Sunday, how are we going to support that facility if it's going to be open? So, we've already been talking about that, but we're not going too far down that road yet because we don't know if it's going to pass.
So, as a sort of follow-up question for that, just to solicit all the information, our facilities, obviously, are used by the community when school is not in session, which is part of what our communities, our facilities offer the community. Is it our anticipation that if we do this bathroom project, those bathrooms would be open, let's say, to families playing tennis or community members using the track?
Yes. They would be open when we had individuals here working who could maintain them. So, then we'd have to talk about, okay, how do we support their use on Sunday? So, we have to talk about that, because if we're going to have facilities like that available, I want to make sure they're open when people are here.
Yeah, but I think that's also important for the community to know that this would be a resource.
Jane, did you?
Yeah. It really echoes pretty much what everyone else has said. I had jotted down three things, which is, you know, a lot of the parents I've talked to that have kids in the district now, they really are very much in support of maintaining our schools to the level that they're at now because they're very proud of them, but they have questions, well, some of these items that are all lumped together, some appear to be necessities, some appear to be wants, and why aren't some of these part of our operating budget? So, that's, you know, it's all what everyone else has said, and so I think we need to help people understand that. From community members who may not have children in the schools anymore, I have heard, again, like, they know that keeping the schools in good shape is helpful to them and their property values, and basically, their question is, well, how much is this really going to cost, and how much is it going to cost me? And I need to see that in really clear, you know, charts and dollars and cents numbers. And then there is some confusion, I know, over the proposition with turning Grilly into a single point of entry, like, what does that mean? Like, that's a term we use all the time, but people are like, well, does that, what are you really closing up? Do I see a rendering? Are you shutting down the front of the school? Are you enclosing the walkway? You know, so there, and understandably, some of us are deep in, and we know what this means, but the community doesn't, and there is some talk about, will that really make it safer? And we've talked about this with our task force, and we'll talk about it more with our audit, that it's a combination of things that make our schools safer. But, so I think it would be helpful, obviously, we can't send out an artist's rendering at this point of what it will be, but we can maybe, as part of the FAQ, explain really what that entails. So, that's, you know, but in general, the comments I've gotten have been positive. I think the difficulty, and I know that you'll go into this more, is that people don't understand what the tax cap has meant to our budgeting, they don't know that we have not gotten the COVID relief funds and the building aid that some other schools do, and that we have to budget differently, and that's all things that I think would be helpful to really put out to the community in a very digestible form, so.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, everyone, for their feedback. So, I think that this is a nice segue into the next portion of our meeting, and it's really about the scope of the project. Now, I just would like to remind the community that we initially had three propositions. We had a proposition slide of things that we knew we absolutely needed to take care of, and then we had a second proposition slide of items under consideration that we received a lot of feedback from the community on that we needed to address, and then we had, in the original version, Proposition 3 was the front entrance of Grilly. So, I'm not hearing from you that we should be changing the front entrance of Grilly proposition, hearing from you, we need to define that better for parents so they understand it. So, I think what we need to have an understanding from the Board tonight is, for, I'm going to call it the first referendum, the way that we have currently framed it for the community was based off of feedback that we received from you in our previous meetings. So, would you like to revisit this scope, or would you like to move forward with this scope and just provide clear information to the community on why these are all important? So, that really will determine what our next steps are, because if you want to revise determine what our next steps are. Because if you want to revise the scope, then we probably need to have another meeting, because there would be, there needs to be a, a different financial analysis based on the revision.
Um, I'll start, and we can go down. I, I'm still, I'm still comfortable with putting it forward this way, because I know it's been through several iterations. We really went over all of these projects. I think there, there might be a question. I know one project that we were interested in was the, like, the, the Bell Cafeteria and Auditorium, and maybe that's something that we can put forward, and, and we can talk about if it's possible to budget for that or something. I know some people are interested in that, if that's in, in operating budget down the road. But people also need to know that it's, it's quite functional, and we're fine, and all of that. And we, it is, it is a sense of priorities. And when we first divided this up into two, two different referendums, we, we all decided that we felt more comfortable putting this all in at one. And, and really to put forward, we don't want to start doing separate bonds to the community and breaking this down into parts which I think would be more confusing. I, I like the plan of putting in what we really think we should be doing now, and explaining to the community why, why those things are in there, what, why we need them, why we can't put them in our operating budget. And I, I'm comfortable breaking it down this way. So everyone, we can see what everybody else says.
I mean, I, I think, what you said, Jane, is correct. But I think we need to have a more detailed plan for each of these items for the community, so they can understand the value of each of these items. Because I think some people think there, what I've heard is, why are we using, why do we need a modified baseball field at Seven Bridges? Why, you know, why do we need cafeteria air conditioning? For example, there, I don't think the community, what I'm hearing, understands the importance of each of these. And I'm not sure if we've, we've effectively communicated that. So I think we have to communicate that, especially if you're going to ask for, you know, $33.5 million. I mean, these are all important things. And again, like Jane said, we should also understand why they can't go into a normal budget, our normal budgeting process. But I think we have, we have to get from the administration a better understanding, or a better detail of each of these projects, and what, what they entail, and why they're, why they're absolutely needed.
So, we met multiple times, you know, regarding this. And I think one thing I did want to bring up was, there was a question about, um, the, I can't really remember the exact naming of it, but the exterior doors. So someone were to ask me, well, this is like, I think it was like maybe $200,000. So if you're replacing certain things, or you're adding new things to doors, and that might be classroom doors and not exterior doors, so how is that defined? Like, are we now putting in something in our current doors, and then going to rip it up, you know, X number of years? So if that's the case, then why don't we just switch out the doors, and just add that back in? Does it make sense? So that was just one thing that was part of it. But it, again, it was about the priorities of what makes sense, and how do we do this? Or if we don't do it, can we budget it in? Or is it too much? Or is, is adding the doors back in going to really make sense, or not, you know? But other than that, like, I'm comfortable with what's out there. I think, just like what everybody was saying, I think we need to be able to define it, and, you know, summarize and simplify for, for people that really are not in the day-to-day of, of all of these aspects. Because it's, it's hard. Like, you know, Jane mentioned the, the single point of entry at Greeley, and somebody asked me, what does that mean? Like, how many entrances are there? Are you talking about when you first drive in? Isn't it only one driveway? Is there a back driveway? You know, so these are things that people think about that we might not necessarily think about, because we're so in it.
Okay, Ryan?
I'm comfortable proceeding, just a few points I would add. One is, you know, I do think it's worth it to over-communicate rather than under-communicate the process that we went through to select the items that are presented here, and to help people understand that this is a cold list already. Like, that we, we did take out multiple things that, and I think for community members who are wondering if we're being judicious, are we, are we, are we really trying to reduce things down? It will help reassure them if we show them in a really explicit way. Well, here was the much larger list, and here's what we pared it down to. And then, as others have said, let's be really clear about what the value is that you get for these kinds of upgrades or repairs. So as Hillary was saying before, something like a roof is pretty self-explanatory. I'm not sure that everyone thinks through some of these other ones. Like, the idea of air conditioning in the gym and the cafeteria does a lot of things. It, it creates flexibility for the leaders of our buildings to move students into those spaces on hot days. I don't know that our community would naturally think about that. They would just be thinking, oh, yeah, it'd be nice to be cooler in there when there's an event. No, it actually is adding capacity and flexibility. So there's more value there than you might just see on the title of, of the item. And so if we can be really explicit about that, I think that would help. I think the other thing to pay attention to is just, there's a high variance in the cost of these, or, like, there's some stuff on here that's really pricey, and those items are, to me, really the non-negotiable ones that we've got to have. And some of the other ones that are less expensive, where people might be nibbling at the edges, if they saw that that has a negligible effect on the bottom line of what any community member is going to play, we might see people relax a little bit about, well, if there is a little bit of a sense of the community, well, is the Seven Bridges baseball field really justified? If people saw in the finances that that's, I don't think even $1 per family member to add that, that perhaps it wouldn't raise as much attention, if, again, if we can lay that out for people to really see how that works. And my last point is, I think people can also get fooled by the precision in these numbers sometimes. And you'll see some of these are more of estimates rounded to the nearest $100,000 in some cases, and in other cases, it's down to the nearest dollar. I think if we can show our math a little bit about how we got these numbers, and to the extent that we don't be, we, we aren't, you know, do we need to be as precise as presented here, if, if we know that in the end of the day, when we implement these projects, it's not going to land exactly to the dollar as projected here? Again, that could give people some comfort if they understand, you know, these are estimates. And it might, it might help to communicate that as another part of what we do in rolling out this, this referendum. But I'm, I'm comfortable proceeding with what's on the list here.
Ryan, you said one thing, you said about the air conditioning, hot days. How many hot days have we had this year, where we've had to?
Do the heat alleviation plan?
Yeah.
I'm not, I, I didn't prepare that, but, so I can have that ready for the next meeting.
I mean, next week, next meeting, we're voting on this, right?
If you think that's going to influence whether or not we're going to move forward with the proposition, then we should have another meeting.
So next week, if we're going to do this, can this be changed? Can this be amended next week, or no?
On the, on the third, you'll have a resolution in front of you with an amount, an amount on it. So we would have to have another meeting in between now and next week, if you're going to vote on the third.
So what you present to us on the third has to be voted on exactly like that? We can't, we can't make a change next, next Wednesday?
Right, right.
So I think I'd like to see, you know, how many times in the last three years have we implemented the heat alleviation plan, since we've implemented it? You know, that's, I don't understand what Ryan's saying about being, having more areas open to use when we have heat, but I, I don't know.
I mean, I can do-
I think, I think that's some of the, these are some of the questions that the community's asking.
So, can I just say something to that? So I guess if somebody were to come up and ask that to me, this is the response I may give. I'm not sure if I'm accurate in that. But if we had, if we think about snow days, you know, how we build in snow days, and then we have, and I've never seen, I don't recall, but maybe it's because I wasn't paying attention as much. But let's say there's four days that we had heat alleviation plans had to kick into effect. And if we didn't have that, then maybe, I don't know if we have to close the school or whatnot. That will count towards the number of days that the kids will not be in school, where, you know, we're required to be in school. What is it? 180 or 181 days? And I, I'm thinking that, that will now, we have, we would, because, not because of snow, but now it's the opposite, because of heat, we would have to add on school days, to whether it's holidays or recess, you know. But if I'm correct, I can be completely wrong. But I'm thinking, but it's also not, I think it's really hard for us to ask students, children, students, and, and teachers, and faculty, and people to be able to think and, and learn in, in a way that's productive, and in places where, you know, you're, you're hot. So it might not be that many days now, but also looking to the future, it might, it's also looking to the future. So, and I'm not saying that one is right or the-
Or it might be less, Kayla, we don't know. We, we can't look in the future, I mean.
I, I was just going to jump in here, too. And, and I know that we may, we all may land in a different place on this. I mean, we've had presentations before this board previously on the need for air conditioning and heat alleviation. I know there was a community organization that came and presented to us at one point. And I'm looking at this, and again, Warren, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I personally want to look to the future. I know we have had some days, maybe not this year, but maybe in years before. I know there were some events or, or summer camps that had to be canceled, or extracurriculars because of heat.
That was this year.
That was this year. I see what's going on in other parts of the country where they're struggling with this, and just looking at the big picture of climate change. That's why I, I feel particularly that the, the air conditioning, I, I support the air conditioning in there. But I, I understand, it is very hard to tell from year to year. There are some years where we don't use our snow days. And then I remember years here where there were like weeks of no school because of snow, and they had to cancel midterms, you know, it was so bad. So it can really vary year to year. So I, I do, I know, we're all, we're all guessing, Warren, too, in terms of the future. But just in terms of which direction the train's going in, that's, that's, I am concerned about the heat. So that's just my, that's my two cents. But I'll let everybody continue. I know Hillary wants to say some things.
Yeah, and so thinking back to what Christine asked about leaving the, the proposed referendum as it is. So I, I really have been thinking about this a lot. And I want to lay out my, my thought process, even though I land with yes, I think we should leave it. So, and, really, I want to be respectful of the community members who have come to us and said, this feels like a lot. Because it does. Like, it's a lot of money. There's no two ways around that, right? Like, it's a lot of money. And it's true that it started out as more money, and that we looked at it very thoughtfully, and, and did eliminate things from the proposal. But that doesn't change the fact that, you know, $33 million is a lot of money. But it's also true that, looking at it, and really looking at what we would potentially take away if we were to take away things that were not necessary, those are, those are such a, a small fraction, as Ryan was saying, about, of this total number, and will make such a real and tangible difference to the lives of our, our students on the day-to-day, that to me, it doesn't seem worth taking them off the proposal, because it won't move the needle much in terms of where this burden lies for our families on the year-to-year, in terms of where the, the, and, and that's not to say that every dollar doesn't make a difference. It does. But we really are, in terms of the things that are not really essential, like anything that we could actually, I think, kind of debate, are the small things, with the exception of what Warren just mentioned with the air conditioning, which I want to address. Because I think that over the years I've been on the board, the only thing that families have consistently asked us for, in terms of also listening to the community on, on, when the community comes and asks us to do things, is air conditioning. We, you know, have had many parents come to us and say, our kids are suffering in school. And I think that this is, in many ways, sort of a splitting-the-baby answer, because we can't air condition the full buildings of our school. Like, that, we looked into that, it was prohibitively expensive. So to look at just the communal spaces, which in our buildings are sort of the least ventilated spaces to start with, the ones where the most bodies are in a room, and the ones where the heat alleviation plan would allow us to move people through, I think that it's, it's a place where it does make sense to spend the money. And then the last thing I want to say is, is with regard to Proposition Two and Greeley, I think that especially given the short timeframe with, which we're putting this to the community, we need renderings, even if we're very upfront, that they may not be. Because I had a community member say to me, why do we need an $11 million front door? Like, I think people do not understand, and I don't mean that critically, I think people don't understand what we're talking about, if they haven't been in this conversation, you know, for these years. So that's a really long way of saying, yes, I feel comfortable leaving this.
So I have a, I have a question. So I want to go back to Hillary. So Hillary had mentioned the exterior doors, and, and a reconsideration of whether or not they should be placed in the first proposition. What is the board's feeling on that?
Oh, that was Kaylee, right?
Yeah, Kaylee had mentioned that.
Right.
I think we can take care of that through the regular budgeting process in a, in a, in a tiered way. But if you'd like us to talk about and place that in the first proposition, we can. So what are your thoughts?
No, I think as long as we can plan for it, and we can do it with our regular budgeting, you know, through operations, and that's fine. I, I just think that was just something that I know some folks have asked about.
And that's, that's, and also that's more information to post out to the community, to say, these are things we can handle, regular, regular budgeting, and, and tier them out, and make sure it gets done, to show them what we can and what we can't handle in the operating budget. So.
Do we, do we know what the cost to turn these air conditioners on is going to be? Andrew?
We haven't gotten to a design state where we can even provide you that right now. I could be engineered, have to look at what the ultimate design's going to be. And you have to assume there is going to be some electrical increases for those spaces.
I mean, it's going to cost us water. I can't, I've got to get my glasses on.
Those spaces are ventilated, right? So this is really just dealing with the condensing side of, of cooling the air. So, so it's a marginal increase in, in electrical usage.
Okay, so it's $5.5 million. What happens when you flip those compressors on?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, it's $5.5 million to add the AC. What happens when we flip those compressors on? That's a question.
You mean, in terms of what, how much it adds to our electrical bill? I know that Joe did mention at a previous meeting, though, that any new system will actually be much more energy efficient than what we have now. So I, I think that's, would be hard to tell.
That's the HVAC need, not the air conditioning needs. That's the HVAC needs based on current conditions. That was supposed to be more energy efficient. I'm talking about the, the gym and cafeteria air conditioning.
Pression I got, and this could be wrong, was that by upgrade, adding these systems, it was an upgrade to the full system, but we should absolutely clarify that for the community as part of this process.
And that's all I'm asking. I think we need, I think we need a lot more clarification on each of these points. And then I think the community will buy, get behind this. But, you know, I'm hearing questions, and I have my own questions. So you're asking us next week to, to, to vote to bring this to the community for, I'm bringing a proposal forward. But I think a lot of these questions need to be answered before next week, so we can, so when we have this discussion again next week, we can, you know, vote with confidence that we, we've got the right mix of, of projects here. It seems to me like the, the other four board members are, are comfortable with, this is a full, a full mix. I think I could be comfortable with this. I think I, I have some more questions I need answered.
All right. So Warren, tell us exactly what information you want us to have prepared for our presentation next week. So I hear you wanting to have an understanding of the heat index and the impact on instruction. And then if we, if we can, do some kind of an estimate of, I don't know if we can do this, but we'll see if we can, the, the associated, I'm going to say, for lack of better terms, electrical cost of running the air conditioners?
The costs of running the actual air conditioner?
All right. And, and is there anything else that the board would like us to share when we do our presentation at the, at the next meeting? We're going to be asking you to act on the resolution beforehand.
If I have more, I'll send you an email.
Okay, that's good. That's, that'll be good. Okay.
I think just in terms of understanding how the HBIC works, like, I think it's very different in a big building, like any of our schools, versus any of our homes. And so I think it's just getting a handle on, can you turn it on when it hits 90, or does it have to be running all the time? You know, those kinds of questions.
And we'll have, Joe's away this week, but he'll be here on the, at the next meeting. So he'll be able to answer those questions. Okay, right. Anything else? So then I just, so the, the remaining slides have not been adjusted at all. So estimated cost for the front entrance of Greeley is $11 million. Our financials-
Go, go back to, I think what Hillary said is, you know, are we going to have, are Go back to, I think what Hillary said is, you know, are we gonna have, are we gonna have drawings for next week?
Right, so I think what we can do is provide context, but I feel like we wouldn't have an engineer actually present what the front of Greeley would potentially look like until after we went through the process, the community voted, and then you hire the architect, but we can talk conceptually.
But didn't KG and Diori present some mockups for us?
They did, but I just don't want to give the false impression that that's what we're actually gonna do, but it might help people understand what we're thinking about.
I think we can, maybe we can show that next week, say, these are things that we've seen in the past, and this is what we can look at.
We also have a rendering of the front office of Greeley we could share as well, that FNI has done.
I think that would be great, because then-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need, I think as long as we're upfront that this is an old rendering, we don't know, but to give people a concept, really, of what we're talking about, because I think, first of all, you've got two very groups, different groups in this community, right? People who are intimately familiar with Greeley, because either they have kids here now, or they have kids who have already completed Greeley, and people have no idea what we're talking about, because they may have come for like a STEM fest or something, but otherwise really don't know this building well, and we're asking both groups of people to vote on this referendum, so we need to make sure that people have an idea of what we're talking about.
I also want to share, to your point, there's, after a decision is made by this board, it's our responsibility to go out to the community outside of this meeting and present this, so we'll be engaging in that process once we come to resolution on how we're moving forward.
I mean, anyone who's done any kind of home renovations knows that you get some ideas, and those ideas change, but at least you have an idea, was it, you know, a million dollars, a 10 million dollars, 100 million dollars, or is it, you know, a full plate of windows, or is it like window panes? I don't know, I'm not an architect, but-
Yeah, I agree.
Christine, can you, you were mentioning that it's your responsibility as the team to go out to the community, like, if we were to stay on track, can you give a sense now of what that community outreach timeline would be like?
Yeah, so let's say you move forward and you vote on the 3rd, then we would push out, we had talked about an FAQ, a video, an information blitz, and then we would hold meetings, probably in all six buildings, for parents to attend, some would be at night, some would be in the morning, and then we'd have a webinar.
So we could do that through all of October?
Yeah, it would be October and November, leading up to the vote. So we'll do our due diligence to make sure people have, who choose to participate in the process, have the information that they feel like they need to vote on the propositions. But we have, we just, we have, when you make a decision, that's when we'll move forward, right?
Right.
But all this feedback is great, because the community's feedback to you and your feedback to us is helping us craft what that needs to look like.
So none of our financial slides have changed, so for those of you who are watching, if you have specific questions about how this is going to impact you in your home and in your taxes, I'm gonna suggest you call Andrew Lennon, he'll be able to help you with that, because-
And we can anticipate that there'll be a more broken-down part of the FAQ that will say, here's an estimate, if you currently have a helm that's valued at this and have a lot more data points, you can expect between this and this, so people can just see it really easily, some people are really good at reading graphs and some people are not. So I know that we can do that moving forward, and hopefully give people some, you know, just really easy bites of information that they can-
Because we also understand these, the slides are complicated.
Yeah.
We, for, we have members of our community with different, a different knowledge base about finances, which is why the draft financial packet was very helpful for some people, but it was confusing for others, so we understand that, so we, go ahead.
We also know what everybody calls it.
Well, that's another opportunity when we share with people moments that they can come and speak with us, because we'll be live, and able to interact in a different way than in this setting, we'll be able to support people with the information that they need to make a good decision when we do move forward with the referendum. So I am, I am just moving through these slides, because we've already presented this information to the board multiple times, and so, and since we're not making any adjustments, I do want to go just to the timeline, so if we move forward, we're now on target at our next meeting to present to you a referendum that would authorize us to move forward with the vote, with the understanding that you would need to act on that, and I also know that in preparation for that meeting, we have certain questions that we already know we need to address, and then you may send us more questions in advance of the meeting for us to incorporate into the presentation, so. With that, that's the end of our financial update and our timeline and our facilities presentation for today, so thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we are now moving on to committee reports. I know that we talked previously about that we had chosen the members that would be joining our various committees, and I know they will be getting information, there'll be a lot more committee meetings coming up, it's just been the first few weeks of the school year, so, but I know that there may be some that you have attended, does anyone want to chime in if any of their committees have met?
I do.
Go ahead.
So we had an audit committee this evening before the school board meeting, we welcomed Matt White as a member of the audit committee, we had a lot of, we asked for people to volunteer, we had a lot of volunteers, but we wanted to pick someone who had a lot of experience. Matt has extensive experience in audit, and we look forward to working with him on the audit committee. That being said, we can talk a little more about audit later, when we go through the item five.
Okay.
I think that was it, nothing for facilities.
Okay, anyone else?
We had a policy committee meeting, really, we just outlined what some of our thoughts are on the year, and, yeah, it was actually a pretty brief policy committee, and we'll keep you posted if we have any policy updates, but it really was just a sort of brainstorming and planning session.
Okay. I know we have, I know Lisa's going to send out a notice that we will have our first communications committee advisory meeting in the next week, and I think that will also get, be a good opportunity for us to talk to our new committee members, to get some more feedback on the bond and communication that we will need to send out, so that everyone feels comfortable with how we're moving forward, so I know that that will be next week and people get notice of that. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to our public comment period, we welcome all public comments, in respect for each other's time, we always ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, board members can be always contacted via phone or email, and after the public comment period has ended, the board members can then decide to have a discussion amongst themselves to address any comments presented, so, sorry for the echo and some of the sound issues tonight, would anyone like to make a public comment, if so, step up and state your name, thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, my name is Victoria Alzepidi, and I live in Chappaqua, and I'm the president of Friends of Button Hook Forest. And first of all, thank you for the update about Button Hook, that was greatly appreciated. And, you know, we know, we all know, that you opened, or you announced the bidding process for the Button Hook property in June, and at that time, you noted that the deadline to submit bids was August 30th, and Friends of Button Hook Forest did in fact, as you know, submit a bid on August 30th, and one of our partners, Phyllis Tucci of the Brother Town Indian Nation, reached out to the CCSD office on Friday, September 2nd, on the morning of your 9:00 AM meeting, she actually reached out at 8:45 AM that morning, and she spoke with Mary in the office, and Mary actually spoke with another person in the office to confirm that the Friends of Button Hook Forest was the only entity to submit a board, a bid, before the deadline, or by the deadline of August 30th. So this evening earlier, Jean, you mentioned that there were actually two bids submitted, so does that mean that there was another bid submitted after September 2nd? After the August 30th deadline?
Okay. Jean, you have a first one. So public comments, not a Q and A, but the board may respond to any comments made during public comment after the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. And just along those lines, if there is anything else that is important for you to share with us, or that you feel it's important for us to know, please reach out to us, I know that you have our contact information, and we're open to and welcome any contact or communication from you, so thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, I would like to state, I just want to clarify something that I said earlier, and I know this may be difficult to understand, and we can clarify this at a later date, I did not say there were two bids on the property, I said that we had more than one offer. That may be difficult to understand, the differentiation there, but there is a differentiation, I'm not at liberty to give more details on that now, for some of the reasons that I stated earlier. There are certain things that we discuss privately in executive session, and we plan to give the community more information on that after we have our continued meetings and we move forward with how we're going to resolve all of these issues related to Button Hook, but I just wanted to clarify, I am not saying that we had more than one bid, there can be offers that are not bids, so I'm just gonna leave it at that for now, and respectfully say that we will inform you more as to details of this property as soon as we can. Does anyone else want to say anything?
No, I just would like to remind the community, we have been in this since 2010, so I understand that there is a feeling of urgency, but really, the reality is, while there may be a feeling of urgency from some members of our community, the matter is not urgent, and the timeline needs to be followed in a way that we are following a process that's really important on behalf of the school district, which includes everybody.
Right.
And so that's, I'm not saying that to be insensitive, I'm just saying it because it's the reality that the timeline is the board's.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approvals and ratifications, we have item 3.1, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the September 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting? Can I have a second, Ryan? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
All right.
All right, I am recommending 4.1 instructional, and I'd like to just acknowledge before we move forward that we have two candidates on there tonight that are being recommended for tenure, Nicole and Laura Jean, they both work in Grafflin, and should the board move forward with my recommendation, we will be supporting and honoring them in June with the rest of our tenure candidates for the 2223 academic school year.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to Nicole and Laura Jean. I think, is someone here? Yay, congratulations. Oh, we got a contingent there in the back from Grafflin, all right. Okay, congratulations, I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And this brings us to item 5, our consent agenda, there are three items, 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3, and tonight's consent agenda, we use our consent agenda to make, I'm sorry, what?
No, that was in, hooting in the lobby, because it was exciting.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought somebody was yelling something.
For one of their tenure candidates.
Don't worry, yay. We use our consent agenda to make more effective use of our time by adopting in a single motion all these items together that cover relatively routine matters, any member of the board who wishes to pull out an item individually can do so, and would anyone like to pull anything out at this time? Okay, so I would like to move items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3, these are CSE summaries and motions involving our internal audit, so, and can I have a motion for 5.1 through, 5.3, the consent agenda?
You moved it, right? I'll second.
Did I move?
You moved it.
Okay, I did. Can you remember? Okay, any questions or comments? I know Warren wants to say anything, sorry.
So, first of all, regarding, I only have a comment on 5.2, that we're appointing Newwarky Smith as internal auditor, first of all, I'd like to thank the audit committee and the community members of the audit committee for interviewing the candidates for internal audit, they did a very good job, and thank you, Andrew, for taking, getting all the RFPs, all the requests for the inputs from the RFP, and bringing them to the audit committee. First of all, I'd like to thank Tobin and Company, who have been our internal auditors for over 10 years, as long as, before I've been on the board, for doing a great job for our district, and the fact that we're changing is in no slight to them, but the audit committee felt that we wanted to take a different direction, the way we look at internal audit, and that's why we picked Newwarky Smith. So thank you to Tobin and Company for the great job you've always done for us, and we look forward to working with Newwarky Smith as we go forward, but I just wanted to clarify that, that there was nothing wrong with our old auditor, but we wanted to take a different direction.
Right, and as we discussed, sometimes that's, even though it's not really a duty or obligation to change up our auditors, it's a wise practice at times, and so you're choosing between good and good, and sometimes it just makes sense to make a change, so we're very thankful for all the work Tobin and Company has done, and we're excited to start with a new auditor as well, so, okay, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. And that moves us on to item number 6, be resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges the following contracts to be approved, that were already approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085, 6.1 is a contract with Mohawk Mountain House for the 2022 Board of Education Retreat, 6.2, that's 6.1, 6.2 is a contract with Lisa Davis, a former board member here on the Board of Education, to facilitate that retreat, and I just want to say that that is our annual retreat, which is where we get to conduct a lot of business and really work on ways to become more functional as a board and as a district, and that will be upcoming in October, so can I move to-
We don't conduct business in the retreat, we-
Sorry, to, yes, to, we have to conduct business in public, it's the only time we are allowed to really be all together-
And work on how we work together as a board.
And work on district functionality, and how we work better as a board, yes, thank you, Warren. So there are special rules, as you all know, rules and regulations on when we can get together and we can't, and a retreat is an opportunity for us to really discuss a lot of matters together in a different setting, that really helps us function better.
What I like to say is, you know, our district, we really work hard on professional development for our staff, thank you, Adam, and your team, and Andrew, and Christine, and Jamie, we all do, our, I think a lot of teachers come to our district because of the professional development we have, that we're always looking to improve ourselves, and just like that, a board needs to do that also. We can sit up here twice a month, or however often it is, and read through our documents and go, and vote on things, and understand what we're doing, but to really work together as a board, the retreat really helps us get there, having a facilitator helps us look at other ways we can look at how we can better help the community, so this is like our professional development.
Right, it is, absolutely, thank you. And by the way, a lot of the teachers, the new teachers tonight, that I was in small group with, mentioned our wonderful professional development, so we get an opportunity in a certain way for ourselves to do that as well, and it's really vital, so that we can figure out ways to become more effective and more efficient, all for the benefit of the community, so we will be doing that in October, and this allows us to do that, so can I have a motion to acknowledge items 6.1 and 6.2?
I move.
Second, Kaylee? I think we had our questions and comments ready, so all in favor?
Aye.
We have nothing under facilities and financials, so that brings us to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting, as Dr. Ackerman stated, is on a Monday, unusual for us, but we're doing it because of the holiday that week, Monday, October 3rd, at 7:30 PM is our audit approval, and our West Orchard Elementary School presentation, that will be here at the high school, and then our following meeting after that is Wednesday, October 19th, at 7:30 PM, that will be a Roaring Brook Elementary School presentation, also here again, at the high school. Can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight at 8:51 PM? Ryan, can I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.